Good evening. Thank you for coming to order. It is 6 o'clock on August 23rd, 2021, and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council Meeting to order. Councilwoman Harris, can you lead us in the invocation? And the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. 6 o'clock snuck up on ya, huh?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, I would like to appoint, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Billard Bastian Ardi to City Council Post One to fill the unexpired term of Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Pam Tomma.
Move to approve?
Moved by Jim, second by Stacy, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
Make a mo, I'd like to move, to move the public comments after administration of both of office.
Yes, please. Any a second. Joe moved, I heard Jim second, to move number three above public comments so we can get our new councilperson sworn in. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, seeing none. I call the question, all in favor of the amendment to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So now, Judge Heidrick? And?
The office of counsel and board of the city of Dunwoody. And will to the best of my ability. Support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Charter ordinances and regulations. Of the city of Dunwoody. I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any one account or publishing. You could say. Or any political activity for. Now you're not the holder. Of any office of trust. Under the government of the United States. In the other state. Or any foreign state. Which by by the laws of the state of Georgia. Are prohibited from holding. And I'm otherwise qualified. To hold said offense. According to the Constitution laws of Georgia. And I've been a resident of my district. And the city of Dunwoody. The time required by the Constitution. And the laws of this state. And by the municipal charter. And I will perform the duties of my office. In the best interest of the city of Dunwoody. To the best of my ability. Without fear or danger of work. Thanks.
Do you want to get pictures? Stacy? Please show the judge. That could see it right here. And thank you again, Judge Heidrick. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. I can share, I can share Stacy. Okay. Thank you. All right, public comment. We'll have 30 minutes. Before the meet, at this point in the meeting, and 30 minutes at the end of the meeting. Every speaker gets three minutes. And with that, all, in this, the cards are in the order we receive them. Joan Weiss? And I think I said it already, but everyone gets three minutes.
My name is Joan Weiss, and my husband John and I live at 5116 Hidden Branches Circle, our home of almost 40 years, backs up to the western side of the Sunshine Car Wash and the shops of Dunwoody. We chose our home in the branches because of what we saw in Dunwoody Village back then, for the schools and for the beauty in this part of Atlanta. And we were excited and proud when Dunwoody wanted to become its own city in 2006, independent from the county, to determine our own zoning, improve infrastructure, and hire our own police. I was a part of the zoning committee then, I care about zoning now. Back then, we spent a great deal of time talking about the village, the overlay, what would work for the new citizens of Dunwoody and future residents. We knew we had to be smart, fair, transparent. 15 years later, we need to have that same standard. We had an acceptable compromise in option three. There was a clear diagram to preserve 150 feet of natural buffer. There was nothing fair and transparent when the city scrapped the agreed-upon plan. Discussions were only held between the commercial developer and the city, not us, not the residents. And just as alarming is that there is no plan for the buffer. It's called open space. One person last week said, oh, it'll be a park, you'll love it. There's not a written word about that. It'll improve your home values. Really? And I've shared some pictures with you of our backyard, and I have some questions for you. Do you see that from my back porch, my backyard is only 35 feet deep? Do you believe an additional 35-foot buffer is enough to provide our home and the other eight families enough separation from open space? Can you imagine what unspecified open space could be? Anything from a decimated wasteland, so the commercial developer can say he did his part, to an amphitheater with lights and noise and bathrooms and what else? I don't know. I'm asking you to create a nature trail there. Residents now and in the future will enjoy your decision. The deal right now is how fair is it that the developer, the developer, he gets a blank check from our city council? A blank check to do whatever he wants to do to the existing buffer, open space? The developer gets to destroy 80% of the trees that we had always planned.
Thank you.
To preserve. He gets that, and all I get is 35 feet.
Ellen Holloway? And you have three minutes.
I live at 5057 Trail Ridge Way, back up to the barbecue restaurants. And my neighbors who have shown up in great force today to show that they care, this whole community cares. We come to you today as concerned citizens who want to see a thriving community and healthy commercial property behind us. As each of you and city staff work diligently to obtain and incorporate our community's ideas of what a new revitalized Dunwoody Village could be, we envisioned a place to work, play, and gather as a community. Last year, through hard work, our community developed a plan for the village. As the budding neighbors, we had very serious concerns about the buffer, the density, the retaining walls, the height of buildings, roads, and paths. Through many discussions, we compromised and decided that regardless of what else is in the plan, we can live with it if the buffer remains largely intact. Though not perfect, last year's plan keeps most of the old hardwood trees that offer us some visual protection, sound barrier, and air quality, and allows rezoning to accommodate the community's vision for the heart of Dunwoody. That is the plan the community wants. Since one developer rejected the community's plan in a selfish bid to grab land wealth, neighbors have had no say in negotiations, and the plan before you today allows for an 80% reduction of the buffer while permitting even more density and height. This is not what the community worked to envision. We believe we can have both a beautiful, profitable, and vibrant village and protect the natural wooded buffer. It's a both and, not an either or. As the developer might tell you, the shops of Dunwoody can be profitable in its current footprint. One-story buildings and a parking lot will transfer to a five-story building. How can that not be financially feasible? We have 1,650 signatures on our petition to give neighbors a voice and save the buffer. That is what our community wants, and it should not be rejected because of bullyish greed of one developer when this buffer has been the condition of rezoning for 45 years. The current plan is not good for the city or neighbors, but is really, really advantageous for the developer. I encourage you to listen to our voices so that we may develop a plan that truly works for all of Dunwoody. Thank you for your time. Thank you to the citizens who shared their vision to develop the plan this developer blatantly rejected. Thank you.
Sharon Frank, sorry, microphone's not on.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for allowing this time. Sammy Purcell wrote and quoted Dan Webb in The Reporter regarding the park. "The idea is to make a pretty park that the folks who live in the new development will enjoy and let their kids play in," said Dan Webb, attorney for the property owner. "We're not talking about paved open space, we're not talking about a parking lot, we're talking about a park." What is a park? If you look it up, it is an area that, yes, does have some green space, walking trails, trees, something very pretty. We want to communicate with the property owner this. Buffer has been around for 50 years, and we have only 30 minutes to present to mayor and council how 80%, 80% buffer clear cuts affects homeowners and Dunwoody, and of course, Tree USA. Our DeKalb County lost an important document, and there has not been a natural disaster in 50 years. Are there assets for mayor and council to purchase part of the buffer to keep Dunwoody as natural as the Dunwoody Nature Center, which I know is owned by Dunwoody, the city of Dunwoody? And that is what we are envisioning to some point. I'd love for all of you, each and every one of you, to please walk that buffer, please see what it is, see what it means. And please give us time for homeowners and the shops of Dunwoody owner car wash to sit down and talk. Our attorney, Brian Dawhill, said at a zoning meeting he has tried, and Mr. Webb disagreed he had not attempted. It is important for us homeowners to discuss with the property owners. We want to. Your ideas, please. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna mispronounce his last name, so I apologize, but it's Brian, I can't really read it. Okay. Okay. All right, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Brian Dowdell here on behalf of Dunwoody Homeowners Association and the members that are represented on our statement of opposition. The issue here is, last year, y'all invested a tremendous amount of time and money and effort with all of the stakeholders, with the neighbors, with shops, everybody out there to develop a plan. It went through your process, and you came up with a plan that had DV4 in the center and DV1 on the outside. So there was a step down in intensity and density of the property as you moved toward the western boundary, which is residential. This property was developed originally based on a buffer being imposed between the commercial development and those residential neighbors. Whether that 77 ordinance can be found today or not because of DeKalbs, we'll leave the words unspoken, but the reality is, y'all don't have to have the 1977 ordinance to affect the intent and what was put in place. Today, when y'all act, when y'all act on this, the lawsuit that the developer filed preemptively goes away because whatever happened in '77 becomes mooted by what you do today. You had a plan that had stepped down to the side, and the developer is the one that wants to change that plan. It was going to be DV1, which has a max four stories, now it's going to be DV4 with a max five stories. There was 150-foot of buffer shown there, it was wooded, it was shown wooded on the original approved site plan in '77. Y'all treated the property lying north of this property and the property lying south with undisturbed buffers. So it's not unusual or strange for these homeowners to ask for the same treatment. Regardless of how we got here, regardless of what ordinances exist, it's not irrational. And that's actually the standard y'all get governed by. When your actions are reviewed is, was there a rational basis to treat this property differently than the property immediately north of it and immediately south of it that were similarly buffered between this commercial development and the residential neighborhood? And I'd submit for your consideration that there is a rational basis to offer these neighbors the same protection everybody else on the western boundary got. There's not a reason, because this one developer wants to move the central district over to the western boundary and then reduce the buffer by 80%. That's not rational. That doesn't treat any of these property owners the same way, and we would ask y'all, at a minimum, as you look at this, treat these homeowners in a rational way. There is a justification for it, you've already done it. You did it to the property north, you did it to the property south. We'd ask you to do that, and at a bare minimum. If y'all are determined to go forward and do what the application is for, don't give them a blank check. Say that when you come back to develop this piece, you're gonna have to bring that back in front of the city for consideration.
Bob Pacella?
Thank you.
My name is Bob Pacella, I am the current president.
I thought so.
Excuse me?
Said it right.
You did.
Okay.
That's impressive. I am Bob Pacella, and I am the current president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. The DHA formed in 1970 in large part because of DeKalb County zoning decisions made in Dunwoody. DeKalb's suspect decisions were in large part why we became a city. Well, now it appears the city, or at least city staff, is making an effort on a buffer that has existed for at least 44 years, and to top it off, staff cannot produce the full ordinance that made this buffer law back in 1977. There's a lot of assumptions being made by staff, and they cannot tell you definitively that an undisturbed buffer is not part of the conditions of the 77 ordinance. I just want to remind council why we became a city, and perhaps remind staff of that. If our citizens can't count on council to have our back, then what good is us being a city? Thank you.
Joe Hirsch?
Hello, Joe Hirsch. I'm sensing a common theme, and it's somewhat courtesy and lack thereof from the city council and staff, and that, that goes to, a lot of people behind me are talking about not being able to get conversations between staff and themselves, or between, and what I'm gonna bring up is with residents, not being able to hear from council members and hear replies. You know, with the city doesn't hold open forums where we get to chat with the council members, and this is a one-way conversation where you don't reply to us. So when we send you an email, such as myself sends you an email and no one replies, ever, when it's addressed to you, such as, for example, Jim Reithe, I've sent you numerous emails with your name and two on it, and the number of years that you've been on here, how many times have you replied to me? Oh, you can't reply right now, but I'll tell you, it's zero, zero. I think you're intimidated by me, but I understand. So, Mayor, what I'm trying to bring up is, as you know, you've been notified numerous times of a resident of our city who's been trying to speak to you about Fran Millard Day, your proclamation, and you refuse to even, just even acknowledge. You're so quick to respond to people on Facebook, and you get total accolades, which you deserve for helping people. But when a resident has asked you 20 times at least, and I know you've seen them, that you don't even acknowledge or respond to a person? A person who, in this city, I don't know if you were trying to reach out across lines in our state legislature, passed Fran Miller's section of the highway, but our city gave a ceremony for Fran Millar, who said that he didn't like too many people voting in your African-American churches. And when he was asked to clarify what he meant, he said, what I mean is, we need more educated voters. And you named a city, a celebration for him, honor for our city in that day, and you won't even respond to anyone asking you why. You don't have to respond to me now because you're not allowed to, but why can't you respond to the citizens and other people who've asked you for a request, sitting up here on your thrones? You know, this city was supposedly, just like the DHA said, part of why we became a city was because, oh, we're this, these buddy buddies where we can all run into each other, we're a small town and so great. But no, there's this wall where y'all sit up on these thrones and don't reply to any emails, ever, ever. You haven't sent me one either. You don't reply to us, you don't acknowledge us. So this is unacceptable. I have a few seconds remaining, speaking on behalf of attorney about Dan Webb, the one who's supporting making changes to the buffer. I personally can tell you, if he's representing the developer, I can tell you personally, he's a slimy attorney. I don't like the man, and if he's representing them, you know that it's dishonest. He's not a very good man of his word, and I will attest to that if he sues me, and I bring it on. Thank you.
Gary Ray Betts? You have three minutes, sir.
I am Gary Ray Betts, and to be fair to the mayor, my inquiries were on Twitter regarding Fran Millar. I don't know if you were looking at it or not, but I had never been more ashamed of being a citizen of Dunwoody since 1993, is when Dunwoody named a Fran Millard Day. When, here in 2014, you had, when he was the Republican state senator, he espoused Jim Crow tactics where he was against early Sunday voting because it would benefit primarily African-Americans. And when he was asked to explain himself, he said he preferred more educated voters. Now, to me, whether you agree with it, say, and it was nationally publicized, and I'm sure you're all aware of it, why have a Fran Millard Day? Aren't there more deserving folks in Dunwoody? I mean, even Ryan Seacrest, even John Hennigan, you could have that for a day, okay? But I, I just think, even if you don't agree with the optics of it, and don't be saying that, well, he's done so many other things from the city, I think that one act, and there's possibly more because somebody just doesn't say those things, and there's, you know, where there's smoke, there's fire. You know, that one act of them, and it racism does not, it nullifies any other good you've done. And then one last thing is, I'd like the city of Dunwoody to consider passing an ordinance legalizing recreational marijuana. Then otherwise, you guys do a great job, and it's a difficult job, but that one act of a Fran Millard Day, I was very, very embarrassed and ashamed, and I just want it on record that I don't support it. Thank you much.
Alan Holloway? Sharon, how much time is left in the 30 minutes, please? Hold on one second, Alan, your time won't start. 10 minutes, 16 seconds. Okay, that's fine, you're three speakers. Go ahead, Alan, you have three minutes.
Sure. My name's Alan Holloway, and I live at 5057 Trail Ridge Way, our home shares a property line with the shops of Dunwoody. I hope Brian has the opportunity to really articulate our legal objections, but I want to draw your attention to the process and how this proposal by city staff came to be on your agenda tonight. Planning staff has characterized this as a negotiated compromise. However, all negotiations to reduce the buffer and increase density have solely occurred between the commercial property owner, their council, and planning staff. None of the affected single-family property owners have had a seat at the table as stakeholders who have to live with the long-term consequences of the decision of this council. We think we should have a voice. And it's a shame that there was, you know, a lot of these neighbors were involved for years when the overlay district was being visioned, and it's a shame that we haven't had a voice or a seat at the table in the last year since the commercial property owner filed a suit. We have, through Brian, our attorney, we have reached out to Dan Webb to seek a call or a meeting to discuss the issue, and our request has been denied. I would define this process in two words, exclusionary and inequitable. So I realize that this forum, this format doesn't allow for a question-and-answer conversation, but I'll ask some questions in hopes that you'll take note and jot them down and find worthy of asking for yourself. Why were the neighbors excluded from the conversation? Who benefits from this? Prior to the lawsuit by the commercial property owner, the larger Dunwoody community and pla, and planning staff supported buffer option three. What has changed? Who benefits from a departure of the overlay district vision? If the city wants to allow for a redevelopment of the village, which many of us support, and, and that, that, and that redevelopment includes higher density, it owes, the city owes at a minimum at least the same protection that the neighborhoods enjoy under a higher, higher density, not less. Our Dunwoody zoning ordinance and the Georgia statute requires it. So I ask again, who benefits from, from this clear cut? The potential clear cut of nearly three and a half acres of wooded forest? How does this proposal align with Dunwoody's comprehensive plan, Dunwoody's tree preservation ordinance, and the moniker of City of Trees? and the moniker of City of Trees? The commercial property owner has dangled the carrot of a park to be built in the newly created open space. So if no commercial or residential building can be built-
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. We support buffer option three.
Robert Levy.
I'm, I'm Robert Levy. I live in fifty-one oh eight Hidden Branches Circle and a budding property owner to the property, uh, in question. I moved here in nineteen seventy-five and became involved with the Dunwoody Homeowners Association to negotiate with developers who wanted to rezone the land behind our house. We negotiated covenants for undisturbed buffer, a hundred and fifty feet behind a car wash and two hundred feet behind the shops at Dunwoody. Somehow the two hundred feet got this, anyway. Since there is a fifty-foot elevation drop to some of our houses, we also negotiated a berm to cover the site path and sounds from the buildings. The D four zoning, if it's approved, some of us will look up uh, over a hundred feet to the top of a five-story building without the benefit of tall trees to block the site. We only found out about this proposal one week before the planning commission meeting. And we asked the community developed, the development department to help us contact and negotiate the developer. The answer was, that's not our responsibility, it's yours. To our knowledge, no member of the community development department or the planning commission has ever set foot or seen the buffer in question. Since we are over, since there are over a hundred protected specimen trees as defined in the city code, we've reached out to the city arborist for an evaluation only to find out that she is on administrative leave. There is no compelling reason to cut down these trees. The buffers have been there for over forty years. The tree is probably over a hundred. We want the same zoning as our neighbors in the north and behind the, the shops, the Dunwoody shops, Dunwoody Hall Shopping Center. We voted you here to guide the city and we would like you to vote to save the Dunwoody trees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill Grossman. Bill Grossman, thank you. Bill Grossman.
Good evening. Bill Grossman, five oh six one Hidden Branches Drive. This has been a long process. We're getting close to the end of it. Started with the plan for Dunwoody Village. And we all pretty much bought into that and we liked the idea of it being developed. I'm within walking distance if we can ever get a trail to it, which I hope will, will happen. There's a couple of things though that, that really bother me about the way this process is going on. First, after the approval last year in November, I asked the community development director that, uh, Brian, our representative, sit down on any meetings with the opposition and, and him. Um, he agreed. And about every month I'd ask if, if anything's happened yet, and I always heard they won't talk to me. Then a week before a planning commission meeting, we hear our item is on the agenda. And we get a Zoom and we found out at a Zoom meeting with him and Cecil, uh, where Cecil said, "I'm finished searching, we're not going to do anymore." It's been kind of amazing to me, uh, what we've been able to find on our own, sending multiple requests to the county. But there's always been a few things that have been run, uh, a bit loose. You might remember when the community development director took Dunwoody United Methodist Church out of the, um, overlay district when it hadn't, or he put it back in, actually, we took it out in two thousand ten at the request of the church. John can attest to that. Um, on the planning maps and all the public shirets, it was shown back in and I wondered, well, when did this happen? Uh, it turns out it didn't happen, at least not officially, but somebody put it back in to square off the corner, we were told. This time, I take a look at what's, what's offered. And I looked on the map and I see there used to be four public parking opportunities. One of them's disappeared. Uh, the one closest to the subject property. And I'm imagining that, uh, if they have their way, that parking garage will reappear uh, on the map where it started. Right next to Dunwoody United Methodist Church, who needs more parking.
Thank you.
Good night.
Right. All right, that include, concludes the cards I have for public comment. There'll be another session at the end of uh, meeting if, uh, another session of public comment. All right. You're gonna read, Sharon. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing at first, first read of R C twenty-one dash oh one, rezoning of fifty-five hundred Chamberley Dunwoody Road and twelve forty-four Dunwoody Village Parkway from the current C one conditional local commercial district and Dunwoody Village overlay district to the DV four Village Center District. Paul Lindhart.
And while Paul's, um, talking or getting set up, sorry, just a reminder to council that we don't vote tonight. This is just a first read.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, good evening, Councilwoman Bastian. Good to see you in, in this new role. Um, I have a combined presentation for this agenda item, which is the rezoning and for the text amendment that's your next agenda item because they're, they're linked to one another. Um, but please do, uh, ask questions of, of each one and we can pull the slides up for the second agenda item if need be also. So it's the, uh, the rezoning for the shops at Dunwoody, uh, so that side and the side to the north at twelve forty-four Dunwoody Village Parkway. And it's, uh, rezoning, uh, a reasoning case and then a text amendment case. The both parcels are currently zoned C one, which is a local commercial district, uh, the parcels to the north, to the, to the east and to the south are zoned Dunwoody Village. So this was all done at the, at this comprehensive rezoning in November of last year. Uh, immediately to the west is the Hidden Branches neighborhood, uh, single families zone, R one hundred. And how I structured this now is I'll, I'll give a little bit of historic, uh, historic background to this, then I will go into this, uh, proposal tonight to the, what we're having in front of you. And then as a third part, I'll go into what we know about the current zoning and the case file from the nineteen seventy-seven zoning case. So these two parcels were taken out of the comprehensive rezoning for the Dunwoody Village in November of last year. So it's pretty, pretty much at the end of it because of the legal threat by the property owner. Uh, those two subject parcels were then excluded, um, after they objected to the hundred and thirty-foot zoning buffer and twenty-foot transitional yards that, um, was proposed to be imposed. The issue at hand is where they are disagreeing that there currently is a zoning buffer on the site. And therefore they're objecting to this large buffer being placed on them uh, and, and, and claim that this isn't taking. Um, the question is like whether the zoning buffer is really a zoning buffer or whether it's a private agreement that since expired. And what we're bringing to you now is sort of a negotiated agreement between the staff and and the property owner in response to the lawsuit with the hope that the lawsuit would go away should this be approved. Unlike most zoning cases that go before you, there is no project associated with this. This is sort of a preemptive zoning to allow for the right conditions for future development, but there is no project currently proposed. So while this in, in practice is sort of the continuation of the comprehensive rezoning from last year, due to the nature of this and due to the nature of the language and the Dunwoody Village regulations, there are technically two cases before you now. The first is a zoning map amendment or rezoning where we would rezone this from the current C one conditional zoning and the Dunwoody Village overlay zoning to the DV four, which is the Dunwoody Village Center District. And then there's a second case, which is your second amendment, uh, second agenda item, that's a text amendment. We're replacing the Dunwoody Village regulating map with a new regulating map. And what that does is it applies the open space that's proposed. It applies the undisturbed buffer that's proposed and it applies the street requirements that are proposed. And then there's a second text amendment that's would delete the language for the Dunwoody Village overlay district. Because these two parcels are the only remaining parcels in the district, so the district wouldn't be needed anymore and can't be deleted. This map shows, is like the proposed regulating map. It shows immediately to the western side, a thirty-five foot undisturbed buffer. It shows then towards the east of the buffer, it shows a hundred and fifty foot open space. And then it shows immediately to the east, a proposed street, like a north-south facing street. And then an infill street grid with east-west connections. And a second north-south street, which is the continuation of Dunwoody Village Parkway, which is this important street grid that are posing tobacco into the Dunwoody Village area. The zoning for the two parcels would be what you see here in pink, which is the DV four. Because this question came up at the planning commission, um, question is what would this open space look like? And the open space would have to follow one of the four different open space types that are in the, in the Dunwoody Village districts. So it would either have to be a plaza, a green, a commons, or a park. These are the example drawings from, from the code. They come with different the amount of impervious versus impervious area. They come with different use scenarios. And that would have to be decided at the time of redevelopment what this open space would look like. It's a fairly sizable amount. It's over two acres, so it would be a fairly sizable amount of, of open space. I want to juxtapose a little bit here, um, what we're proposing versus what's currently approved. On the right-hand side, you see the current regulating map. So you can see what some of the speakers previously mentioned is the continuation of the buffer to the north and south of a hundred and thirty feet with an additional twenty-foot transitional yard. You can also see that the two parcels currently are not part of the regulating map because they're still zoned C one and they're not technically part of the, they're not technically part of the Dunwoody Village zoning. Here in comparison, and then some of the previous speakers have mentioned this also, is what was before you in two thousand twenty, before these two parcels were taken out. There was along the future continuation of Dunwoody Village Parkway. The side to the west of it was on DV one, which is the Dunwoody Village commercial district. The parcels to the, or the parts to the east was on DV four, which is the Senate District. And we're proposing this all to be part of the Dunwoody Village Center District. The thought here is to move the development, the bulk of the developments towards the center of the district, so towards um, Chamberley Dunwoody Road to allow for higher densities there in return for those first hundred and fifty feet on the western side to be kept without primary buildings. I have a chart here that shows the difference between the two districts. So on the left-hand side, the DV four district, which is proposed now, on the right-hand side, the DV one district, the parts of the site was previously, um, proposed for. So the difference is about fifteen feet in height or one story. There's slight differences, there's a ten percent difference in maximum purpose cover. And there are higher mixed-use requirements that would be put upon the property owner. So they would have to have two separate use categories, so they would have to, for instance, do a residential part, a commercial part, or a commercial part or an office part. It would have to be two separate use categories, which isn't required in the DV one district. The use is generally allowed a very similar, so both are more or less commercial districts. Or mixed-use districts. And I have another chart here where we know that currently on the site, there's a a hundred and fifty foot buffer to which the property owner objects. Now just not thought to it and if there truly is no zoning buffer on the site, what would govern is the zoning ordinance and what that could lead us with is no undisturbed buffer of any form, so it's zero feet. In the zoning ordinance, there would be a ten-foot transitional yard. It would have trees, there's some tree requirements in there. There's zero feet of open space. And the effective building distance to the residential property line would only be thirty feet, which is the C one district rear building setback. So if there truly is no buffer on the site, let's say, that would be thrown out by a court in some form, then buildings could be up to thirty feet to the property line. What we're proposing now is again thirty-five foot undisturbed buffer followed by a hundred and fifteen feet of open space. And then immediately following is this north-south street that we proposed, which has a sixty-two foot right-of-way approximately. So the distance to a building would be approximately all two hundred and twelve feet, so over two hundred feet distance. And it would likely be the front of a building, sort of built towards that street instead of the rear of a building that comes with loading and utilities and so forth. So we think it's a a more appropriate arrangement for the transition to the neighborhood. So with this, I quickly want to go through, uh, the fact that we have them from the nineteen seventy-seven zoning case. Again, some speakers have correctly identified that we wish the records were better. We wish we would have a, a case file for the nineteen seventy-seven case. We do not. We wish we had complete an, an ordinance that was approved. We do not have that. So what I'm proposing to you now is the best we have. So we found minutes for the case. So we know that the commission at the time approved this as a conditioned case. That's the minutes reflected. We have since then, since it was initially proposed to the planning commission, we have received additional documents from the Cab County. And this is from the cap county department of of planning and sustainability. That we received the night of the planning commission meeting. And that we weren't able to to put into that meeting. But the case was deferred multiple times. We've received minutes that were part of your package. We received the minutes. Leading up to the decision. That showed that the case was deferred multiple times to allow the property owner to come up with a separate private agreement. With the with the neighbors. And the commission did not want to approve this until the private agreement was signed. To allow for those stricter standards that were covered in the private agreement. And I'll show you both the conditions and the private agreements. We found this part of our search, we found this document, which is called a statement of zoning conditions. Which. Indicates the conditions that were placed upon the development. At the time, it speaks about a hundred and fifty to two hundred foot buffer adjoining the neighborhood. It speaks about additional requirements that were put upon it. We do not have a signed version on this of this, but it's. It's at this point, you know, it is it is the best we have. It does not speak about the under-stuff buffer. It speaks about a. A hundred and fifty to two hundred foot buffer. We also have the zoning case, we have the site plan for the zoning case. We know from this statement of zoning condition that it was to be conditioned to a site plan. We have this document that is labeled the approved plan, so we are assuming. It is the approved site plan. It shows a hundred and fifty foot buffer and a two hundred foot buffer adjacent to. The neighborhood, which pretty much looks like, and that that's how it was built, is how it looks now. And again, does not speak about an understood buffer. So we find the language for the understood buffer in this private agreement that the. The county commission at the time wanted to be signed before they made. Before they made a decision on the zoning. This private agreement between the neighbors and the developer. Stipulates sort of the understood nature of the buffer. So here's where the the language for the understood buffer comes from. So these covenants did expire in nineteen ninety-seven. There was language in here that would have allowed for a transfer of the buffer area to the county at the time. There was language in there that would have allowed for transfer to the DHA at the time. These options were for for some reason or another, not not exercised. So the agreement expired in nineteen ninety-seven. And again, the the document here is specifically labeled as not conditions of zoning. Overall, kind of what what our goal was in the negotiation was to. Allow for the future development of of the district to have these two parcels join. The overall zoning for the district, so it can be developed. As a cohesive neighborhood, as a cohesive town center, or the city of Donwoodie. What this proposal does is it shifts the future development from the western side of the property. And adjacent to the single-family neighborhood towards the eastern part, closer towards the center of the district. The proposal also maintains existing hundred and fifty feet distance. The hundred and fifty feet of distance between. The neighborhood and any buildings that would be placed there. It even exceeds that to over two hundred feet of area where there won't be any primary buildings in the future. This proposal, kind of that's before you know, has the buy-in from the property owner. So the lawsuit would go away if approved. It would allow for the completion of the Donwoodie Village rezoning project. And would provide regulations that are supportive for overall vision of this. I would put before you that these two, so these two agenda items, the rezoning and the text amendment. Should only be passed in tandem. So should you wish to approve the rezoning, please also do approve. The text amendment. If you wish to deny either one, please also deny. The other aspect because they have to, they function together as as a whole. Our planning commission recommended approval. To this in in a split vote. Our staff recommends approval to both of these. And with this, I would conclude the presentation and we'd be.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm going to open the public hearing first and then we'll do questions and comments after the public hearing. So with this, I opened the public hearing. There'll be ten minutes for each side. I'll start with ten minutes for. At before we start, don't, one second. Cecil, there are two public hearings, right? So even even though the presentation was combined, I'm going to do.
I think we should follow the format strictly and.
Okay, so ten minutes. Okay, all right. So this will be ten minutes. Again, everyone knows, just to be clear, we all understand that these are totally related, so. You're speaking on both or whatever, but anyway, go ahead. There's ten minutes. Sharon, you're going to be the clock keeper. This is ten minutes for.
Good evening. My name's Din Webb, twelve thirty-second Street, Georgia, three oh three oh nine. Here on behalf of the owner of the Shops of Done Woodie and the Sunshine Car Wash just to the north. Before, again, I want to mention, I've been doing this a long time in just about every jurisdiction in the state of Georgia. And I've never had my integrity questioned before. I don't appreciate those comments, but I understand the source of those comments. And I know you're all well aware of the integrity of the person who made those comments as well. I will stand on every dealing I've ever had in the city of Done Woodie for the last twenty years. I'll stand on every dealing I've ever had with the DHA. And I'll stand on my reputation in the legal community. And I'm also not going to sit here and apologize for my client trying to protect his property rights, because that's all it is trying to do. And that's all really anybody in this room is trying to do. I don't know how you can try and claim it's fair for you but not for somebody else. I'm going to touch on a few points that I heard earlier, but let me clarify one or two things. My client's not the applicant here, all right? It didn't start this process, didn't choose to be a part of it. It was brought into it because the city initiated it. My client's only here because its property is affected by the proposed. Overlay, and as a result of the overlay, my client's property has been under a moratorium for going on two years. Right? That's on the verge of being unreasonable. You've heard about a lawsuit. It is pending. The proposal for you is basically a settlement of that lawsuit. The terms have been blessed by the city attorney based on the facts. I saw Paul try and go through some documents. I'm not going to get into that. That's what the lawsuit's about, but. From our perspective. Papers are being taken out of order, out of context, and kind of mashed together to make an argument. But we reviewed it. We don't agree with it. The city attorney's reviewed it and he doesn't agree with it either, so. I think the compromise before you, at least from our perspective, has the hallmark of a true compromise. Certainly not what. Anyone really wants. It's not what my client wants. I assure you, a hundred and fifty feet. Of buffer on its property line, placed to about three point three acres of undevelopable area. But it's something it can live with, and we hope it's something the city can live with as well. Let me talk a little bit about the buffer proposal. Again, you've heard it's a hundred and fifty feet off the western property edge. That's three times larger than the largest zoning buffer required by the 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 Donwoodie zoning ordinance. If you've got C one next to a residential property, you're only required to put in fifty. And we're proposing three times that amount. And on top of that, to the east of our site is, you saw from the map, is right-of-way. So there'll be separation of at least two hundred and twelve feet. From the western property line to the closest building. And the first thirty-five feet of that hundred and fifty-foot area will be undisturbed. The rest will be green space. Mrs. Weiss said. There's nothing specified for that area. Who knows what it can become? Other people talked about clear-cutting and parking lots and this and that. That's incorrect. There is actually a defined option for green space. If you look in the Donwoodie Village overlay, there are only four or five things it can be. And you saw in one of the slides that Paul put up. There are actually drawings that show you how they need to be configured, what needs to be where. So this is not a pig and a poach. You know, when we say we're offering to do a hundred and fifteen feet of green space. East of the thirty-five-foot undisturbed buffer, that green space will meet the definition and requirements of green space under the Donwoodie Village overlay. I'd also like to mention there's a stream back there. I think some of you guys realize that. That stream will have a hundred and fifty-foot buffer or seventy-five feet on each side of the stream. And that stream buffer is not impacted in any way by by what we're talking about tonight. That stream buffer will be maintained. I've had heard the neighbors tonight ask about delay. They've asked for that before. I mean, as you well know, I think, at least from reading the newspapers, they have been a part of this process from the beginning. You know, they've been asking for more time to get more documents. They asked for it of the planning commission. They got more time. As you heard, they got a few more materials last week. With the exception of one page that came in last week, none of that is new. It's everything in front of you now. Is everything we've all had for about the last year, and these, everything we have now, all the documents, the the city attorney has already considered making his recommendation. Going to the points that were raised, I'm going to hit these in no particular order. Somebody said something about the developer changed the plan. We had a hundred and fifty feet and the developer changed the plan. That's not exactly true. The plan that first came out through the staff was thirty-five feet. It's it went from thirty-five feet to seventy-five feet, and the planning commission recommended that it be changed to a hundred and fifty feet, because somebody got up and said, hey, there's a zoning condition on this property. It requires a hundred and fifty feet, and that was the impetus for the change. Obviously, we don't believe that that's true. We filed a lawsuit to try and prove that fact, but that's how we got where we are. Brian Dodrell talked about the idea of a rational basis to impose a hundred and fifty-foot buffer here. There's no rational basis here again. The largest transitional buffer required under your zoning code is fifty feet. There will be nothing rational about requiring these property owners, my clients, to have a buffer three times larger than the buffer everybody else is being held to. I've heard a lot of talk about trying to make the property into the bad guy here, greedy, selfish. Again, you know, we didn't start this. All right, we're not here because we want to be here. We're here because we, something happened that we don't agree with, and we're trying to protect our property rights. Just so you know, our clients only own the shops, the shops of Dundee for six or seven years. They did a lot of due diligence before they bought the property, including it asked the city of Done Woodie for a zoning verification letter. Verify what conditions are on this pro- on the property. And that zoning verification letter did not show a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. And my client relied on that letter and other due diligence. It did like an ALTA survey, like a PZR report, like its own study of the records. In reliance on buying that property. So it bought it with Donwoodie telling him there is no one hundred and fifty-foot buffer and relied upon that statement. I've heard comments that we refuse to talk to the neighbors. That's not true. All right, I know Brian. Brian used to work with us. Brian called me. Made an offer. It was sort of a take it or leave it. Here's what my clients will do. Let us know if your client will accept it. We talked about it internally and I went back and said, we can't do it. But there wasn't, there was no back and forth because I wasn't given any kind of an option. I was told, here is the one thing my clients will do. Will you agree to it or not? But the fact is, there was back and forth. We heard what they said. We talked about it and we declined. You saw on that map that Paul put up that there is a one hundred and fifty-foot buffer proposed north of our client, my client's properties. I want to note that that buffer is part of a zoning condition, okay? The property just north of the Sunshine Car Wash, of the Sunshine Car Wash, has a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. Opposed during the zoning process by DeKalb County. That's a completely different situation that we find ourselves in. Mr. Grossman mentioned, we've been at this for a long time, and we certainly have, and I think maybe we've been at it a little too long. We believe this application is ready for approval. My client supported. As some of you know, this is the product of a lot of conversation, a lot of hand-wringing. Again, this is not what my client wants. It does not want to voluntarily preserve three point three acres of its thirteen-acre site. For green space, but that seemed like a reasonable and fair compromise and a way to get at what we thought the neighbors wanted. The staff, as you've heard, supports the request before you tonight. It's been blessed by the city attorney. The planning commission recommended approval as well, so. We hope the city council can move this forward in a couple of weeks and help us put this behind us and resolve this lawsuit. Thank you.
Um, now we'll have ten minutes for those opposed. Is that correct, Sharon? Yes.
We have, we have two minutes left.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone who wants to speak for this? There's two minutes remaining. All right, seeing no one now, we'll open the ten minutes opposed.
Madam Mayor, Brian Dodrell, again, on behalf of Donwoodie Homeowners Association, staff. Took the time to put up several documents, and I want to go through those. Because the first issue that staff's documents that they put up reveal is that you've got a zoning procedures violation right now. The maps that were put up before the planning commission showed the current property as C one C. And the documents that were just put up on the screen are the August twenty-third nineteen seventy-seven. Minutes of the meeting, and it says that it was. Levitin and passed unanimously to approve the application as conditioned. So I submit for your consideration, it is not C one. It is C one C. And the zoning procedures law and your own ordinances require that you advertise zoning from the existing district to the new district. Your ad right now says C one, and they changed it for this meeting because at the planning commission, the zoning map showed C one C. That's a violation of zoning procedures law. It's grounds to invalidate the vote, no matter whose side you're on. Second piece I want you to point, look at is staff showed you the conditions of zoning. And they point to number five, a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty-foot buffer adjoining hidden branches per site plan. A ten-foot buffer variance at southernmost drive. And then they point down to the bottom and said, there's no signature on those conditions of zoning, but they failed to point to you number eight. Six-foot screening fence on the westernmost property line, architecture to be William Bird style, no drainage retention in the. Undisturbed buffer. That's document they said, whether signed or not, was a zoning condition, so. There is evidence that the zoning back in nineteen seventy-seven was conditioned. And all of that energy, I'm going to tell you, it doesn't matter, because the moment y'all vote today, nineteen seventy-seven ceases to exist. So the lawsuit that you have, this preemptive lawsuit, get ahead of a vote, file a lawsuit for declaratory judgment. It doesn't matter whether you settle that lawsuit or not, because the moment y'all pass zoning, that lawsuit's moved. It goes away. You don't have to settle it. It goes away because nineteen seventy-seven no longer matters. Now, let's turn to the present, because that's what we're here for. And in the present, last November, y'all voted to implement the Donwoodie Village, the new district. And in that, you omitted this one piece, but the property lying immediately to the north. And the property lying immediately to the south, y'all imposed a hundred and fifty-foot plus. Undisturbed buffer. It's on your plan. So to say that there is nowhere in the city where you have a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. I would submit, if I step over a property line in either direction, you have a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. So there is a rational basis for y'all to say, we're maintaining a hundred and fifty-foot buffer the length of this pop. Undisturbed, as it was, just like the property north of it is, and just like it's shown on your plan today. All right, now let's talk about, well, the developer says that it would be a taking of the property. The suit that they would file going forward. Since they don't have an application in front of you, they don't have a plan to say, apply your ordinances to this plan and let's see what we got. They're asking you to do this zoning, and if they want to challenge it today. They've got to file what's called a facial challenge, that this is unconstitutional as applied in most circumstances. Not, we brought in a site plan and they wouldn't approve it because of this unconstitutional. That's an as-applied. So they would pick the highest standard lawsuit to challenge. And your defense, and I hate to give away the trade secret, many of you already know it, is, is there a rational basis? For y'all to make the decision you make today? And I submit, as I said earlier in public comments, that you have a hundred and fifty-foot north and a hundred and fifty-foot south that you're already designating as. Undisturbed buffer. Now, I want to talk very briefly, because it's not really relevant to your decision. I reached out to Dan. I've known Dan for most of twenty years. And the response I got back, first of all, I didn't give an ultimatum. I said, do we want to sit down and talk before we have to go pound each other's brains out in a lawsuit? Um, his response was, the developer wasn't really interested in talking to my people. It's irrelevant really from what y'all are doing, because what y'all have to consider is what's out there. And for forty-plus years, the residential neighborhood to the west. Existed and thrived, even though the property that's now the shops was R one fifty and was rezoned in nineteen seventy-seven. They've thrived and existed, coexisted together, because there was a hundred and fifty foot. They've thrived and existed, coexisted together because there was 150 foot undisturbed buffer or natural buffer, however you want to call it, but it didn't involve cutting down all the trees between them. You have pictures submitted by a resident that if you go 35 feet in from her property line, I can see you as clearly as I can see you sitting right here. And the distance isn't much more than the distance between us right now. So the residents have asked, last year, we all sat down and we were at the table then. We weren't at the table when the settlement discussions with the city on the suit that's going to be mooted out were had. But when everybody sat down, they contemplated village center at DB4, the perimeter at DV1, which is a lower density, and the property immediately north of us is DV1 with 150 foot buffer. Now we're going to be DV4, the most dense five story. And they're going to have the least visual and auditory buffer between them and that property of anything on the western side of this village. The Dunnwoodie Homeowners Association has long been a defender of its residences. It's what Dunnwoodie was built around. And we would respectfully ask that y'all either deny the request outright. If, like I said, you go forward, do not give them a blank check. Tell them that when they come to cut the first tree or turn the first spade of dirt in the area to the west of that road, that it has to come back before the city with a plan that the public can participate in and the public can be heard on. So that there is a fair opportunity for all the stakeholders to sit down at the table because that has been denied. Thank you very much.
Sharon, how much time? Okay, with three minutes, four seconds remaining.
Good evening. I'm Adrian Duncan, the past president of the DHA. This conflict came to our attention and we took it up during my administration. We've been hearing about this many feet and that many feet. And this would be open space versus undisturbed space, whatever. We saw lots of pretty colored maps up here. But what exactly is city staff and the developer asking for? You heard from Ellen Holloway earlier this evening. We came in here Friday afternoon with a tape measure. Let me show you what 35 feet is.
You got, Adrian, can you stay at the microphone, please?
You see Mr. Grossman right here? From his spot, all the way up to the front of Lynn's ledge, right in front of her seat, that is 35 feet. Now, the current undisturbed buffer is from your seat somewhere in the police station. They wouldn't let me in there with a tape measure. But in here, they're, they're proposing that it's reasonable to cut this down from what they have now to a space smaller than this room. Now, speaking of rooms, I'm going to speak to the elephant in this one. This body has been vociferous when it comes to defending homeowners against commercial intrusion. No matter how small, no matter how questionable, I have seen righteous fury from these, from some of you. Yeah, John, I'm looking over in your direction. They, there was condemnations and, yeah, Lynn, you too. Condemnations of anyone or anything who would dare disturb in the slightest the residential neighbor, nature of our neighborhoods. Well, I'm not seeing a whole lot of righteous fury in the last year and a half, folks. That's what we need now. These people do not deserve less just because they live near Dunnwoodie Village, and that's a hot topic right now. We need you to be just as supportive of these neighbors as you have of others when they believe they were threatened by commercial intrusion. Anytime you want to show that, glad to see it. Thanks very much.
Sharon. Forty-one seconds. Forty-one seconds. Okay, seeing none. Oh, Bill, okay. Right, your seconds are counting. Right, right, because there's another.
Bill Grossman. I ask you to do the right thing.
Anybody else? Because we have another hearing. Okay, when you're ready, Sharon, you can read the next one, please.
This is review and consideration of text amendments to amend the Dunnwoodie Village regulating map and to delete the regulations for the Dunnwoodie Village overlay district. Paul Leonhardt.
All right, and he's already presented both, so we're just going to go straight to the public hearing unless anybody up here objects. Okay. Um, so now I'll open the public hearing for 10 minutes for this item.
Good evening again, Dan Webb, 1230 Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30309, here on behalf of Peachtree Shops of Dunnwoodie LLC and Set Up 2 LLC. You know, it's interesting hearing tonight and having sat through the planning commission, sort of a change in tactic here. You know, for a long time, the opposition was saying, well, it's a zoning condition, it's a zoning condition, it's a zoning condition. But now they've had access to all the documents and now they've had the interpretation from the city attorney, they appear to have given up on that. I think that's probably wise. You know, the adage in the law is that any ambiguities are construed in favor of the fair and free use of the property. I mean, this is not a completely, completely clear picture. I mean, I'll give you that, but it's maybe ambiguous at best. But again, that ambiguity means that the interpretation by the court would be the same that my client proposes. What I'm hearing now is they're saying, oh, forget all that zoning condition mumbo jumbo. Let's, you just do it. You got a rational basis. Look to the north. There's 150 foot buffer there. Again, there's 150 foot buffer there because there was a zoning condition adopted 20 years ago by DeKalb County that requires it. Well, they say, well, there's one to the south. Well, that's a church to the south. I'm going to guess they don't really understand what that is. You know, the fact that they haven't challenged it certainly doesn't make it right. It doesn't change the fact that until recently, you put a, a buffer on a church property, the most significant transitional area between commercial and residential was 50 feet. And what you're asking for now is significantly more. You know, I want to clarify this idea about the 35 foot line. This is what is the ultimate confusing issue to me. And, you know, we, I want to give the city some credit here. We're all getting attacked apparently for what's been done, but we all worked hard to find a solution we thought would work and the city did as well. I mean, let's put this in context. This seems to be getting lost. We're talking about 150 feet from the western property line. 35 feet will be undisturbed, but to the east of that will be another 115 feet of green space. So you take from the green line to the mayor, that's 35 feet. That's the undisturbed buffer. Now you push that back another 115 feet of green space, which is effectively a park. You've got three, four or five park options under the DVO and they all look like parks, courtyards, that type of thing. So now you're at 150 feet. Now push that back another 62 feet, because that's the right of way. So we're talking about 212 feet from the western property boundary to the area of the closest building. That's the biggest buffer I've ever heard of or seen. And again, we're asking you to do it. And that's the point that's being lost here. I just, I've never seen a more generous buffer. I've never seen a city request anything more. And we're coming to you guys hand in hand with the city staff and the city attorney proposing to do this. And I, it's just, I can honestly say when we left, you know, our deliberations on that, I never thought we'd get beat up over this. I really didn't. I mean, I would encourage people to go back and look through every zoning decision that's affected the city of Dunnwoodie for the last 25 years. My partner and I have probably been involved a third of them. You will find nothing, even in the remote realm of what we're proposing here. So again, we tried to be fair. We think it's fair. You know, we hope that you will accept the proposal. We're ready to end this lawsuit. I think, you know, I think it's time for a lot of reasons. So we hope you're ready to move forward in a couple of weeks and we'll be back to speak to you then. Thank you.
Sharon, how much time is left? Six minutes, 41 seconds. Okay, is there anybody wants to speak for this? Seeing none, I will now open the 10 minutes for those that are opposed.
Brian Dodrell, again, on behalf of Dunnwoodie Homeowners Association, just simply reincorporate my prior statements. No matter what y'all do at this point, there's a zoning procedures violation. It's not escapable. The documents that your own staff put up shows it. And I would encourage y'all to deny this.
Be sure to state your name when you speak, please.
Sure, I had a note in for public comment. Is this an okay spot to do that?
I didn't. Okay, yes.
Okay. My name is Scott Doine. I have a family of four and 5065 Trail Ridge Way. Thank you, mayor, council and fellow citizens. I'm wearing red today along with many of my neighbors here and those online as well in support of preserving our backyard buffer. We urge you to avoid bulldozing thousands of trees and the destruction of critical wildlife habitat. The pandemic had a significant impact on many of our lives, including here in Dunnwoodie. We spent months in our houses confined to our neighborhoods. While at home, we cherished our safety and enjoyed the simple pleasures of the nature around us. We especially delighted in a constant comforting view of our backyard. Some days that view was one of the only things that allowed us a deep breath and a moment of peace. Without the buffer, our privacy and sound protection, which is already threatened by the dog kennel, will further disappear as will the abundant wildlife. Every day we have the pleasure of watching a family of deer walk back and forth across the stream. They've grown up in our backyard. We have squirrels, rabbits, chipmunks, you can imagine. And if that park does not include the trees that are in place today, those animals and our safety and privacy will be disturbed. We ask you to preserve this land, as has been done through good times and bad for over 40 years. And in a neighborhood we call the branches, you better believe we love our trees. Thank you for your time and for your service to the community.
Thank you. Seven minutes, 82 seconds. Thank you.
Bill Grossman. So I've been told, or I've heard that the purchaser of the property didn't do their due diligence. And I'm very surprised by that since Kathy Zickert handled the covenants and worked with Herb Sprague on this in 1976 and 77. We were wondering if she had some papers on this. Maybe if they haven't turned up yet, maybe they won't. But I can't imagine that they purchased close to 15 acres of property without doing thorough due diligence.
I, Tim Bellbutowski, 5033.
I bet Sharon would appreciate if you spell your name, please.
Oh, sure. B E L B U T O W S K I. I'd just like to make a comment to counsel about what Mr. Webb said with regards to the property owner wanting to have full value for their property and not having it infringed upon. I understand that. However, from a neighbor's perspective, I feel like that property owner just made a whole bunch of money when council agreed to give them the new zoning to develop the Dunnwoodie Village. And now I feel like they're saying, look what we got. We want more. We want more. We want the most we can get. And at this point, from a neighbor perspective, I would ask counsel to say, who are you for? Are you for somebody that wants more and more and more? Or are you for the people that actually are going to live and support the Dunnwoodie Village? You didn't hear from the neighbors complaining about adding in new streets or four story buildings or all these kinds of things that probably will lead to more traffic, but also will bring more prosperity to Dunnwoodie Village. But you see us getting angry now because we feel like we're taking, being taken advantage of. And we're looking for somebody to help us out and stand up for us, the citizens of the community. And something tells me that the property owners are going to be just fine in all this. So I'd like to consider, who are you going to stand up for when you cast your votes? Who are you going to fight for? If there's a lawsuit, that's why we have you to protect us, not to bow down to property owners and people who might be wanting to take advantage and be greedy in this situation. Thank you.
Sharon. Seven forty-six. Left.
My name's Alan Holloway. I just wanted to point out that counsel for the property owner mentioned that this was a compromise. And usually when there's a negotiation, all parties have to give something or get something. But here, there's a clear winner and a clear loser. We're the only ones. I'd also like to ask too, you know, the counsel for the commercial property owner mentioned that, you know, this was going to be the, the open space as it's defined can be a park. Well, if there's no commercial or residential benefit, no economic benefit for the commercial property owner, then why does the 110 feet need to be destroyed? My understanding is that after the 35 foot buffer, anything in the 110 feet of open space can be clear cut under right. And if it's a park, what are the hours of the park? Is there a security plan? Will people be able to just walk from the park into my backyard? I'd also like to point out from an elevation perspective, there's a huge elevation diff, different, different difference between some of the single property owners and the commercial property. So if, if they clear cut this area in the defined open space, there's going to have to be a huge retaining wall. John and Joan and Bob Levy could potentially be looking at 40 foot retaining wall in their backyard. That doesn't seem like it's very equitable to me.
Five forty-eight. Yes. No ma'am, you can't.
I'm Sharon Frank, 5049 Trail Ridge Way. Been in my home 40 years. Some people say, don't say that. It seems like you don't want change. That is not true. I wish I had taken pictures of Dunnwoodie 40 years ago and made a coffee book, a coffee table book. It's fascinating where there used to be a 7-Eleven and so many other places that were just different than what it is now. But to clear cut 115 feet to build a park. And it is Mr. Webb who was quoted as saying, it's not going to be a parking lot. It's not one of us who said it would be. He defied saying it would not be. Thank you.
Four fifty-three. Anyone else? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and ask Paul to come back up perhaps, because I think we'll probably have questions and comments from counsel. I just want to clarify one thing while Paul's coming up. The village itself has multiple owners. So this parcel is owned by one company, across the street is owned by another company, down the street is owned by another company. I just want to make sure that we all understand that. All right, Paul. Oh, terrible feedback. Okay, go ahead. Oh. I need to close the public hearing. I did close it. I don't think we have to have a motion, right? No, okay, all right. Questions and comments? Feedback with my microphone, sorry. Go ahead, Stacy.
I just have two quick clarifications as well. And this is in regards to parking and is there a parking deck? Is there not a parking deck? If you look in the village code that we passed, we actually made an amendment that whenever there's a parking deck within 200 feet of anything residential, it has to go through the special land use process. So it is not just, it can magically appear again. We made sure to protect residential from a parking deck anywhere in the village and you can read that. I don't know if it's there or not, but I went back through the minutes and found it. What I couldn't find in the minutes, and I think Mr. Grossman had brought this up. Why was Dunnwoodie United Methodist in the village overlay? They asked to be a representative. They had voted, their board voted, and a representative from Dunnwoodie United Methodist Church came and asked to be put back in the village overlay. So that is why they're in it. I just wanted those two clarifications real quick while we start asking more questions.
Joe? If you're ready.
I have a, just a, also a couple of clarification.
I have just also a couple clarification questions about the transition yards and buffers. So here's I've got, I've got one thing that would be great in the packet. First of all, the presentation you gave, love for that, be electronic and shared to the public. Because we just saw that now. That was not in our packet. So I'd like the citizens to see what you presented as well. If you could put that out there online shortly, that would be great. Let's talk about also putting together a graphic. So I'm a visual guy. Show me at, at ground level. Show me at one story, like am I in a home? Am I sitting in my back porch or am I sitting upstairs looking out? I'd like to see what a visual looks like over distance. If I, what does a thirty-five-foot buffer and how tall would those trees be? What could I see? How tall would have to be what I could see? How far away? What does a one-story, two-story, three-story, what does that look like? I'd love to see that visual example, okay? Because I don't know, honestly, I want to go out, I want to walk. Yeah, I've been out in the back of the buffer. I've been behind Publix and so on. And I know there's informal walking paths and so on. So I'd love to see that as a deliverable to show to the public of have that examples, right? Because I may, you know, show me, trust but verify. And I'd also like to just have a conversation of, you know, our zoning is all over the place. As you said, Richard, we should just start and get this form-based code and get it much simpler and cleaner because you got to go in sort of so many different places you got to go to find something, right? To do research. And it's tough just for us because we're, you know, all over. So I'm looking at, understanding, yeah, there's a, there's a definition of a buffer. But then we also have what's called a transition yard. And then that transition yard, there's a matrix in here. It's an R, but then I don't see where it matches with the DV zoning in the matrix in our section twenty-seven dash two thirty, transition yards. And, and in there, that specifies the height of the trees, the type of shrubs, the, the height of the fences and so on and so forth. And I know I wasn't on council when we put on the east side of the village those townhomes. There was a lot of work involved because that was a much, much shorter, smaller buffer and setback, but there was a lot of work involved, right? In making sure that we had really good buffers and screening and landscaping and so on with those townhomes, which are just, you know, two to, so, stories. So I'd like to have a little more conversation about that, okay? Those are two clarifications I have, okay? Thank you.
John.
For the last several years, the city of Dunwoody has been actively working with the residents of Dunwoody to put forward a comprehensive rezoning of Dunwoody Village. We've had numerous meetings to discuss uses, densities, impacts on the neighbors. And after careful review of all variables, a comprehensive rezoning plan was presented. It was about to be ratified when the Peachtree Shops of Dunwoody sued the city that their proposed buffers would be considered a taking. There's a dispute as to the permanence of the undisturbed buffers whereby Peachtree Shops of Dunwoody believe the condition of prior rezoning to be just a covenant that expired in nineteen ninety-seven and that the city and the residents believed that the buffers were part of the actual rezoning and therefore they're permanently. The city council removed the subject properties to allow all parties time to prove that matter by finding the final zoning documents from DeKalb County. To date, I have seen ancillary data that I believe shows the intent of the buffers to remain in place. But I'm told by legal counsel that the threshold for undisturbed buffers have not been met. Due to the COVID restrictions, I'm sure that if the Cab County records have been accurately searched or if the definitive documents will ever be found. The city of Dunwoody and the developer, Peachtree Shops of Dunwoody, have been negotiating to come up with a workable plan. Unfortunately, the original process of the rezoning took into consideration the wishes and desires of the residents as documented in numerous public meetings. I believe as they were not taken into consideration. Based on what I know of this proposal in front of us, this upzoning was not vetted nor discussed with the public prior to the planning commission just a month ago. I understand that the residents do not feel they're a part of this negotiated compromise as they believe city communication has been limited. And I'm told that, told that the developer has refused all communication with the residents of Dunwoody. This is a far stretch from the outreach and communication that was done previously in our rezoning process. In the original plan, the property in question was to be rezoned DV one, Dunwoody Village, Dunwoody Village Commercial, which tops out at four stories and is less dense. And after the city and the developer, developers' negotiations, the plan is now being presented to us. It proposes that the subject property on the very edge of the Dunwoody Village District now be upzoned to DV four, which was written specifically for Village Center. This DV Village Center zoning allows for building heights up to five stories and allows for greater density and more impervious cover. There's language in the rezoning that the western segment of the property would have a thirty-five-foot undisturbed buffer, greatly reduced from what's already there prior rezoning, possibly. And there is an agreement that the border buildings would not be used for primary buildings. I have questions regarding that. What makes me think is that a primary building is for the main functions? And there's a possibility that parking structures may be placed along that buffer or along that, that boundary. There are significant elevation differences between the commercial property and the single-family homes, forty to fifty feet in some instances. This change would allow for five-story non-primary, possibly parking decks developed closer to the property line, which would greatly negatively impact the residents' quality of life. Based on what I'm seeing, the city council has numerous options in front of us to justly move forward. The first is to do nothing, or more importantly, vote this down. This would allow more time for DeKalb County to find the final rezoning documents and/or for the developer to appropriately communicate to the residents affected. Another solution is to look at the equity of the Dunwoody Village plan as it's in place, whereby I believe we should rezone this property possibly to something more appropriate with the rest of the plan. I believe that this property, based on the neighbors, the buffers, could possibly be zoned into something else other than DV four, DV one, possibly downgraded into a DV two, which is the Dunwoody Village Office. That's only three stories. DV three, Village Residential, that's only three stories. And the property directly to the south is DV three Residential. Council has the option to look at those options at this rezoning as well. Long story short, I do not believe the proposed DV four Dunwoody Village Center zoning proposal on the edge of Dunwoody Village adjacent to commercial, adjacent to residential properties will permit a use that is suitable in the view and use of the development of adjacent nearby properties, namely the residential. I'm ready to make a motion that we deny this request for DV Village Center zoning and/or I'm happy to discuss other options, conditions to place along the zoning type if it's there to lessen the impacts on the neighbors. I'm happy to discuss rezoning this back to DV one with an expanded buffer. I will not be voting for DV four based on what I'm hearing. I don't understand how that is being upzoned appropriately for this rezoning.
Do you have any questions? Okay. Tom.
Thank you. Um, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion tonight and a lot of that surrounds the buffer, which will become mostly open space. And in our Dunwoody Village zoning, there's a lot of leeway in what can go into that open space. There were some illustrations that demonstrate what could go there, but that's not what's required to go there. And so what I'd like to see from our staff prior to us even considering a vote on this is more clearly defining the conditioning on this open space. In lieu of payments, I don't want to be included. Any sort of water detention, stormwater detention would need to be a feature if allowed at all and limited in space. And I do have, but I want to make sure that what is being presented as a park doesn't become a clear field with a detention bond. I want to make sure that it's clearly defined what is and is not allowed there, and that is a strict condition of the zoning. I do have a question for staff on the, on the DV four zoning as well as it relates to the impervious surface. I believe that that zoning allows up to ninety percent impervious. The open space buffer area, I'm presuming would be included in that calculation for the DV four for that area. So that in essence would mean that any development on the other side of the road would have no requirements for, for impervious versus pervious. Would that be an accurate statement?
So the DV four, like the impervious cover requirement would apply to the parcel as a whole? So it would apply to the northern parcel separately, the southern parcel separately? And that would include the open space requirement?
So the open space would be a part of that calculation. I'd also like you guys to, to please consider looking at that as one of the conditions, that the open space is not considered a part of the pervious, impervious calculation for that, that portion of the, of the development.
Jim. Party, okay, that's fine. I wasn't really going to put you on the spot. Okay. Um. Anybody else have anything? Okay, this was a first read. So as I've said multiple times, we're not voting tonight. And I think that's all we have to do, right, Sharon? So we are. So unless anybody has any other questions or comments, we're done. All right, next up is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Or a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Jim.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Party, you don't need to vote because you were not here for the minutes. Any opposed? Sharon, that passes six oh. Mayor, the next item, moving to business items, is authorization for additional cares to grant funding to not-for-profit agencies up to one hundred thousand dollars. Jay Benicki.
Mayor Council, I hope to make the only business agenda you have to vote on tonight a very short one. So I'll be brief with this. To let you know, we have had pretty much a very successful program with the not-for-profits and the grant money that's been going to them. And we've been coming back to you regularly to amend their contracts, amend their contracts. Well, the mayor and I sat down with the not-for-profits the other week and came up with different ways of possibly doing it. And what we have before you is basically permission to ask for. What we're asking for is for the council to allot another hundred thousand dollars in total, which would bring the current five thirty-five to six hundred and thirty-five thousand. We've already spent about four hundred and fifty thousand of that. Instead of doing it the current way we're doing it, but some of the grantees have asked that we be able to front funding to them. What we're doing currently is a reimbursement, and I will agree, it's a little bit bureaucratic. But being our first grant program, we were comfortable with it because we wanted to be safer than, sorry, we're comfortable. We've set up a rhythm and everything. So what we're proposing is for y'all to empower the city manager or his designate, probably it'll be me on this one, is to amend their contracts individually for a ten thousand dollar advancement and for those purchases to be pre-approved by staff. So in other words, and I'll just use I Care Atlanta because we all know that and love them all. They're probably going to go buy food. I can almost guarantee you that. So they'll come to us, they say, we need it, we can wire the money, they can do it the next day, they'll give us the receipts for it. So what this will do is every time one of them expends ten thousand, we'll be able to allot another ten thousand. When we hit a hundred thousand, I want to come back again and ask for authorization for the next funding. So basically, y'all will cap the funding and we won't be coming to you as often. Any questions from that?
Anybody have questions?
Move to approve.
Moved by John, second by Jim. Any further discussion? Seeing none, thank you for bringing this to us. We, I know the nonprofits will be grateful. Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Sharon, that passes unanimously. Mayor, moving to discussion items. Number ten is an overview of sign lighting types, Paul Leonhardt. And this is what I had asked for after the last time we talked about the sign ordinance.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. There was some questions about the different lighting types. There was a lot of discussion, but then there was an amount of uncertainty. What, what is the difference between these lighting times? Could we come back and describe them to one another and bring examples of what they look like? Which is what we're doing today and proposing to you. Now that the structure, I want to first go into why does lighting matter? Like what are some considerations? What have we heard? Then I want to show you what we currently allow in terms of lighting. And then I want to go through the different lighting types as we have them in the proposed sign code. So through the different categories and show you examples of those, what we allow and what we don't allow under the proposed regulations. First, business owners will tell you that lighting does matter. Predominantly, it's sort of the, it was like the visibility at night. Businesses want to be seen at night too, in addition to during the day. But the proposed sign code, we're proposing to reduce the sign size overall, which makes the lighting more important at night because a smaller sign is harder to be seen. And there are certain lighting types that make it easier to see a sign from a distance. So this becomes more important comparatively. There's certainly is like this creative expression issue where businesses want to be branded a certain way with their lighting types. There are free speech considerations here. So this is a first amendment issue generally, like, like all silent issues are. There are aesthetic preferences. We want to have lighting in the city of Dunwoody that looks good. That is something that doesn't decay over time, that is fresh and that supports overall the vision for the development of the city in the future. So we want to create sign regulations and lighting regulations that support that. Overall, like the, what we have heard in a lot of the months, this has been in, in the different states, like at planning commission, at the advisory committee, especially in Dunwoody Village, a desire for additional sign options with the transition from that Williamsburg look into something more contemporary. Businesses asking for additional sign options. We felt a general dislike, not unanimously. There are people who argue in favor of it too, but overall, general dislike for internal box lighting. And I'll show y'all kind of in, in a bit what that is. And then an interest in sort of providing the most lighting options in perimeter center. And then we have the, the most diversity of lighting types there, have less in the commercial districts and then less in the residential and office districts. Currently, we have regulations that apply lighting, lighting standards citywide. So we do not have a differentiation based on zoning districts. Like all areas of the city have the same lighting regulations unless specified specifically in zoning conditions or so forth. The lighting types that we allow are halo lighting, routed personal lighting, and indirect lighting in general. And then we do allow channel letters. And again, like I'll have examples for all of this. In, in a moment, we allow that on tall buildings on the top. That's often what you see on, on high rises, like the lighting up on, on the top of those high rises. I'll start with direct lighting. And as I go through all of those, I'll start with a bit of a definition and the description, what it is, how it functions. And then I'll show examples of it. So we have, and I go through the four different lighting types. So if you take the sign code, as we have proposed it, and you go through those four boxes in there, that's what you need to hold against these different, different slides here. I'll start with the direct lighting. Indirect lighting, the source of the light is internal and intact to the sign structure. So the message, the message itself is the illumination. And it radiates out in the direction of the viewer. So it's pretty much you have the message on the sign itself is illuminated. The message on the sign itself is illuminated. And it's generally only the message and not surroundings of it, so no board, no container and so forth. Under the new sign code, we also include. Face lighted channel letters and routed push-through graphic is part of the direct lighting. They're not technically, so if you're an engineer, you would object to this, they're not technically directly lit, but they appear as direct lighting. So they're grouped in this category. In the current draft, these would be allowed in commercial districts. In the perimeter center overlay, so irrespective of whether something is so in perimeter or not, if it's in perimeter, it can do the sliding. And then on select small signs in the office districts, and that's typically on wave funding signs, but not on the wall signs of buildings and not on the monument signs. Your typical direct uh lid sign is, you know, what you know as neon signage, like those this nineteen thirty type of signage. It's often not neon anymore at the moment. It's often LED now, um but that's your most typical part of.
If I may, just one simple question as far as the direct lighting, the LED, the neon, it's more about the neon. Am I allowed to have beer neon signs in my windows based on this aspect? And how does? Have you thought about that aspect at all?
Yep, we do. Um we would allow. And this is sort of, it's regulated in a separate part of the code, but we would allow up to one sign per business in in the windows or like in the door.
Okay.
Which for most will probably be like an open sign.
Okay.
But it could be the assigned to.
I just remember. Thank you. I just wondered if we would allow them based on this definition. So thank you.
But it's it's one. So if they have an open sign, that counts, right? Okay.
So we have this traditional neon signage, direct lighting could also be lighting consisting of individual light bulbs. And this is when you think about the Fox Theater, it's like the big sign out there, individual light bulbs that are illuminated. On this one here in Sandy Springs. That's considered direct lighting also. Channel letters, that's a a fairly common lighting type. This is, and you can see it on the right-hand side, but you generally have some sort of a neon element or an LED element. In an enclosed container, the front of it is a transparent, or not transparent, but it's it's an acrylic that allows for light to shine through. So it's technically internally lit, but it appears, you know, only the message is illuminated and. Yeah, it it looks sort of from a distance, it looks fairly similar to. Uh a direct lit sign. Uh this is what we call channel letters, which we currently allow in the tall buildings. If you go like State Farm, that's channel letters up top. Along most of those tall buildings, that's the sliding type. We have a few of those in Dunwoody. There's a lot of this in in Sandy Springs. And the final piece here, which we generally allow today to, is what we call routed push-through lighting. And here you have sort of a metal frame where the actual message is cut out, so it's routed out. So you have an opening and then a clear or like a. And an acrylic is pushed through the opening, so it comes out on the end approximately, you know, an inch or two. But it has a bit of a three-dimensional effect because it bulbs out from from the sign itself. That's a fairly common sign for banks. They they often have that out on the wave finding signage. If you see that the AC hotel, the new one that that will open soon. That that's the big sign that they have up top. So it looks generally fairly nice with this kind of three-dimensional effect. This would also fall under direct lighting. Moving on to the internal box lighting. Which is a form of uh in internal lighting, as a lightbox configuration, which is sort of I have that graphic on there, more or less like a big aluminum box. It has uh typically like fluorescent tubes in there. So these types of line light bulbs, it can be LED, it can be sort of all sorts of different actual illumination pieces there. It generally has a printed message that is allows for light to shine through. There's a printed message out front that allows for, you know, all sorts of flexibility in messaging. Big downside here is that it tends to, you know, water gets into it, it gets dirty over time. Like when light bulbs in there start to not operate anymore, it's the one that looks kind of the worst if it's not properly maintained. And we would not allow it anywhere in the city of Dunwoody under the proposed code. We also currently do not allow it anywhere in the city of Dunwoody. That's a lighting type that we don't allow currently and we're not proposing to allow it. I took a few pictures here, so these kind of boxes come in all sorts of forms and shapes. So they come in. They come in uh squares, they come in rectangles, they come in ovals and. So what what they all have in common is generally the entire front is illuminated. So it's not just the message itself, but it's also the background. That's illuminated. So you can see that on this Charles Schwab sign here, but the blue is illuminant also. It can be blacked out like on the on the Hudson Bridge sign on the left.
That's that's a question I had regarding the blocked out one. It makes it look like one of the other functional types, whereas the light doesn't come through. So that is a definition of a box light, even though. It's blacked out till there's no illumination.
And and the difference is like with the routed push-through is sort of the physical difference that there isn't. It's not just like an acrylic surface, but for the routed push design, it's a metal surface. That is cut out and you have the acrylic only in certain parts of the sign. While in these internal box with signs, you'd have you have the acrylic on 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 the entire.
I just figured from the street or from the sidewalk, you wouldn't know the difference.
Oh, it's and 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 you'll find in practice, like if you want to create an a very nice sign, you can do it with a lot of types and you can make them look somewhat similar. And if you want to create a particularly ugly sign, you you can do it with a a lot of these sign types too. That's. So the next, the next lighting type that I uh want to go through is like the shadow or halo lighting. Here, the sign itself is not illuminated, but you have. You have lighting on the back of the sign. The sign itself is not transparent. Instead, uh you have the lighting that goes away from the viewer towards the wall and it. It lightens up the wall behind the sign. By being a non-transparent object, it creates kind of a shadow effect, um a halo effect. Around the sign, the sign is generally kind of placed away from the wall a few inches. And this is currently allowed on most signs and in the draft, it'll also be allowed on most signs. I have a few images here, like the notes from rec is the one down on Hammond Drive. In the shopping center, which has a a very large sign out front that has this shadow or halo lighting type. Where you see the wall behind it illuminated, but it creates this sort of shadow effect by the letters being black. On the bottom right, and and this is sort of a important piece with signage. Is that in practice, a lot of these are mixed and matched. So you can have multiple different lighting types of the sign. And it's upon us as as the staff when it comes to permitting to identify, you know, what it is and what's proposed. Generally. We will allow multiple lighting types if all lighting types are approved. We will not allow combined lighting if one or more of the lighting types are not allowed. So this there on the bottom is an internal boxlet sign that also has halo lighting, which we would not allow in the city of Dunwoody under the proposed code.
If that's not here, that example's not from Dunwoody.
No.
Okay, I was confused. I was thinking it was, but it's not.
No, this is over in Sandy Springs.
The restaurant that just.
And the last lighting type is the indirect lighting uh where. The sign itself is not illuminated, but instead you have. Sort of separate lighting sources that are independent of the sign structure. And the lighting, this is one of those where the illumination radiates toward the sign and not toward the viewer. This is generally allowed currently, and it'll be allowed in the future. Business owners tend to not like this lighting type. Because it's a bit harder to see. There are all sorts of studies around the visibility of these lighting types. This one, because it creates less of a contrast there because it's not the message itself that's illuminated, but it's the entirety, including the wall around it. Hence, that the least visibility. So you'll hear a lot, or you have heard a lot from businesses that want the other lighting types. So this can generally be done at the bottom there. You see uh the gooseneck lights. And it can be done by uplights too. We generally do not allow uplights in the city of Dunwoody. There's one exception, which is silence. Um so the current draft would allow for uplights to signs as well. Um with this, I want to conclude this presentation uh by any means. If if you all have questions about. Design types, um please do ask those. And I would also ask if you can give us some additional guidance for when you bring back the or when we bring back the design code at the next council meeting. You know, if we have it approximately right with the lighting types, um if there's anything that, you know, you would like different different districts and so forth. To give us a, you know, a temperature check on on those.
Anybody have anything to say? Comments, questions? Stacy?
Thank you. This is really helpful.
Just one quick question. So I just want to, the the box lighting, I guess the main objection to that is they tend to over time. Become less desirable looking. They get dirty or 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 the lights could flicker inside as opposed to the, even though they might. When brand new, look very similar to the routed push-through, it's it's more of a over time, they get to be uh less attractive. That's that's the main reason why those are not allowed, correct?
Yep, and 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 they allow for like the highest one of flexibility because it's just a print. You can print anything on there. So. In the hands of someone who wants to create a tasteful sign, they can create a tasteful sign, but they allow for the most flexibility of all signs.
Okay. Um anybody else? My favorite is the indirect lighting, which of course you said the business liked the least, but I I think it's very attractive. All right, anybody? Thank you, was very helpful. And now I understand internal box lighting, which I didn't understand when you were talking about it a few weeks ago as easily, so appreciate it. All right, if y'all have questions or comments, you can get them to Paul along the way. All right, thank you. Next, I believe Mr. Riley's gonna present us something.
Thank you very much.
As a discussion item.
It is, Mayor Council. Mayor Council, what you have before you is just an amendment to one of our code sections that deals with the. Uh enforcement of violations of our city ordinances. It is specifically dealing with the uh the illicit sex for hire that occurs. Uh it's an amendment to the uh ordinance. There are two main functions in the amendments. One is, under the current amendment, is somewhat vague as to where it would apply. We've been recently getting challenges to hotels and motels being a public space. And in order to overcome that challenge, uh we've worked with the police department to amend that. Uh and take that piece out. That would make it very clear where this was uh the uh the enforcement would be available. The second thing that we have is we have defined that transporting persons to for these activities. Knowingly transporting these persons for the activities is also uh is also defined as a violation of our ordinances. This will uh that will give a more precise tool to the police to uh target the pimps that bring uh. Generally, these uh predominantly younger women into the uh locations, bringing them to the hotels, the motels. Sit standing, sitting in the parking lots, waiting for them, going over after the Johns would come, going in and and uh basically taking the money from them. Uh but it's it's a tool to work towards the pimps, which is which is one of the predominant things that our police department does. Uh they their function is uh generally been working to find pimps, especially those that are working. In larger areas rather than smaller areas and have done a number of referrals over to the United States Justice Department for federal enforcement of it, and then uh. We have a very active department, and they've asked us to give them a few more tools, and then we'd ask you to amend the. Ordinance to just sharpen that down where they can, they can more precisely charge.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Joe?
Um yeah, because really, we could probably spend a couple hours. I'd like to talk, you know, talk about the social impacts. How many cases per year, volume that we have? Uh how many hours a year are police force uh doing this and what's it gonna solve? So right now, here's the number of cases it was changed. Here's the number of cases that would have been improved. This is what what's the out the out result on that? Um I'd like to learn a little bit more about the state law, because I hear about human trafficking a lot. What state law can we use that's missing? Is there a gap in the state law? And do we need to go to our state, uh the the general assembly to ask them to clean up and enhance the state law so we can just file a state law instead of having local addition? So I don't know what the state law applies to it and or federal. So I know we can enforce certain things, but I'm not a law enforcement expert. I'm not a legal person, but. Um I'd like to hear a little bit more about, you know, what what's what's the outcome of this change?
Sure. I I can answer that right now. It'll be the basically the same number of cases that we have right now. It'll just be, it'll, we have sharpened up the uh the charging document where it uh precludes some of the defenses that the the defense party presently uses. There are other ways to charge it, but they're not, they're not as accurate. And uh under the present ordinance, we have a wide open space for the defense to challenge the ordinance about the public space that we want to close. We can go certainly into social theory if you desire to. I could, I could probably speak to that for hours if you want to, because or maybe you'd like to do that offline. Since I ran the biggest mental health drug treatment program in the southeastern United States that targeted. Uh these indigent women who were trafficked, human trafficked.
Right.
In in the in 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 Atlanta.
So so where's, what what is state law?
Well, the problem that you have, I believe, uh council member is that uh the. The counties at the who uh who are the enforcement uh armed for state law for the misdemeanors. By and large, have become a financial partner with the pimps. That is to say that if you uh if you're arrested and you go down there and you make a bond, you come back in and you pay, you pay a fine. So the pimp goes and pays the fine and gets. Gets the woman back and puts her back into the business. So the uh that, I think that. It is not about the effectiveness of state law. It is the effectiveness of prosecution and may metropolitan jurisdictions. This is. This is in particular DeKalb County. This is in particular Fulton County or Gwinnett County or Cobb. This is just the way it is. Uh it uh. We have limited resources in terms of what we do for the women, but we do give the women in these cases the opportunity to free themselves from these pimps. We give them the opportunity to uh. Empower themselves over the pimps during the period of time when they work with our police. And we uh and we give them the opportunity for reunification with their families if possible. We certainly don't have the resource that City of Atlanta put to it, where I had a complete pod of women that we worked for. I mean, the the population of women that you can see, the ones in Atlanta were over fifty percent HIV positive. Seventy-five to eighty percent dual diagnosed mentally ill and drug addicted, eighty percent molested as children or better. Uh those those are, those are very hard populations, and uh we don't have the resource to set that up, but. We have limited resources here, and we do the best that we have with our resources. And one of the major things, and I think that one thing that the city can be very proud of, is what the police do in their in terms of. These human traffickers that they find who take women from city to city to city, uh that we, they have. And that we, they have that that our police have broken that chain, identified these people, turned them into federal prosecution. They do have the resources to put these people who traffic, traffic women in in federal prison for long periods of time. And I I don't really know of any other cities who are working that hard to do at that effort to to break that cycle of violence against women as our police do.
And just just last one, the the red line change, the addition, I know you believe this is the one that targeting the pimps were unlawful for any person to encourage aid or a bet another to do so. So that's what the extra line is that's gonna help you. And it's missing in the Georgia code?
No, it's not about what's missing in the Georgia code. Yeah, as I've said, you know, if 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 prosecution would take the sense of urgency that that the city does, we we wouldn't have to do that worse. These these requests are made by our police because our police actually want to get something done and you know, we we're, we are not for financial participants with a pimp that will allow you to come in, pay money and take a woman back and put her back at the next motel, which is, which is what occurs at the state level, at the county level in many counties.
All right, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Consent agenda, consent agenda.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, I'm sorry. This will require two reads.
As Stacy, anyway, I thought, okay, maybe it requires two. Okay. All right, then it can't be consent. Discussion on this, it was just for discussion tonight, it wasn't a read. Okay. Public comments, I think the public is all gone. City manager comments. Okay. Council comments. Yeah. Okay.
This is the first read for some, is the second read the next council meeting?
It is.
Okay.
Usually, sometimes it's not, but usually it is.
This one was discussion, so it would be a first.
Yeah, this one, the last thing we were talking about was just discussion, so there'll be a first read at the next meeting.
Okay.
The prostitution stuff, but the zoning stuff at the beginning.
Item four and five.
Yes, or second read. I mean, there were first reads, so second read will be two weeks.
So we'll, yeah, we'll deal with them in two weeks.
Yes, yes. Anybody comment?
I just want to say again, welcome to you, Artie. After having served on you as the new board of appeals, I'm thrilled that you agreed to for the appointment to serve out Pam's term. And I know you're gonna bring your same thoughtful and logical and pragmatism that you had on Z B A to city council and welcome. It'll be fun to serve with you.
Thank you very much.
Joe?
You can lemonade.
Yeah, I was.
All right, I just want to, as a new, one of the junior folks here, I was fortunate enough to attend a couple weeks ago Georgia Municipal Association Conference. Remember that we're led by a professional city government run by a professional city manager. And so it's great to just network and learn new things, they they have classes and so on, so you really can learn best practices. So really looking forward to continuing to build that momentum of leveraging all the tools in the toolbox, collaborating with everybody. And you know, just I I do want to hit this one for the fellow. You know, I wasn't in Afghanistan, but I do want to shout out to the folks that that had served, the veterans in Afghanistan and their families. It was not in vain. I know people want to start doing armchair quarterbacking, I'm not here to talk about that, but you know, let's send a shout out for those families and the folks and keep them in your in your memories there and as what, especially for those who remain in that current situation. And then just the COVID situation, I do, I do want to take like one more minute here. A man just posted this on Facebook, he says, I have friends right now that don't want to get immunized. I I do right now. And I just want to read, you just bear with me here, but over the, he he put this on Facebook, didn't want to share his name, but it said, this is from him. Over the past week, he said, at least fourteen different friends contact, contract the virus. I've read how this Delta variant spreads and in my personal world, it seems to verify the case. It's spreading like crazy. To my knowledge, six of my friends were not vaccinated and eight were. I don't want to render judgment on either group, I've heard understandable reasons from individuals in both groups. And as I said, I believe in personal choice. Out of the six who were not vaccinated, five had have died. And one spent ten days or so in the hospital. Out of the eight or so who were vaccinated, some had scratchy throats, in the worst case, they felt like they had a cold. Some of the reasons, some of the ones who died weren't just friends, they were very good friends for at least a season in my life. Based on details shared by their family members, their battles were a horrible way to die. It's been a very heartbreaking few weeks for me. Frankly, I'm dealing with a time of great sadness. I just don't. I don't, I just. I have a friend that I was in the army and he doesn't want to get immunized as well, so I just don't want to I just don't want to see others needlessly go through this. I'm sharing this info to make loved ones aware what I'm seeing and experiencing. It's not a judgment and I'm really trying not to make it about arguing a point. And I know for sure that as a human, I can't claim to have a complete handle on the truth. I just care about you and I want you to share with what I'm seeing in the world. I don't want to see you going through something horrible that you could have prevented. Sending love to you all, thank you.
Anybody? I was just gonna thank everybody for who volunteered for Lemonade Days and the Butterfly Experience. Because these events would not be possible and thanks to everybody who attended both. I think we had a great weekend in Dunwoody. And with that.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The meeting's adjourned.
May already have, but just thank you.